Okay, so we'll call the roll, please.
President.
Senator.
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 Okay, so we'll call the roll, please.
President.
Here.
Bye, President.
Dom.
Here.
Senator.
Here.
Senator.
Thomas, your.
Senator.
Yeah.
Senator.
Here.
Senator.
And. Four point O is now. The next, and that's public comments. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
There is no one.
Okay, no one on Zoom, okay. When we go to five point O and. Five point one is the audit presentation. So I think Andy and Mr. Savio will. Take it away.
With that, I'll just introduce Jim, who's a partner with Sickich, and he's probably a familiar face to most of you. He's been with the district for some time. Sickich is one of the largest CBA members in the nation. A lot of expertise, a lot of experience in government accounting. They provide audit services to over 200 government entities. Many of the targets that Sickich has set on some of the key governmental accounting standards, or the ICT, GFOA specialty group committee. They were essential in helping the district get our first certificate of excellence in financial reporting from GFOA. And they've been offering a lot of guidance to work to make sure that we've gotten that award for each of the last 12 to 13 years. I think Jim will tell you that it will be really smooth this year. And a lot of that, I give credit to our accounting manager, Jean Gerstbrand, and her accounting team, they do a really, really good job. And the board allowing us to not have that part-time person. Well, seasonal person, basically, but even that, that really helped make this on an easy prepare for. It allowed Jean to not have to work excessively all the time and lose a piece of time. So we really appreciate the help this year. With that, I'll just tell him to Jim and let him walk you through some of the highlights of the report.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, everyone, for having me tonight. Appreciate your time. I'm gonna do. Like I normally do, I'm gonna start with the annual comprehensive financial report. And I'll start at the table of contents, just to give you an idea of what's in the report. Government reports go, it's not the longest, but there's still a lot of information in there. So if I start at the table of contents, I'll walk you through the table of contents. You'll see in there that there's three main sections, the introductory section, the final sections, and the statistics section. I'll point out right now, and we'll see this when we look at the independent auditor before, but we don't give an opinion on the introductory before the statistical section. We can start off in the introductory section, you'll see the principal officials, the org chart, the letters and bill, and as Andy said, the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the government by the Association. After that is the financial section. We start off with the independent auditor's report. We'll take a look at that because that changed this year, we adopted some new auditing standards, so the kind of the content, a little bit of format. Any independent auditor report. After that, we'll talk a little bit about the management discussion and the analysis that Andy prepares. And then after that starts the basic financial statements. You have the government-wide financial statements on pages five and six, that's the statement of net provision or your balance sheet, and then the statement of activities is on the sixth, that's here in one statement. After that are the fund financial statements. I'll back up real quick. The government-wide financial statements are basically the consolidated financial statements of the district. So it includes all of the fund, they're all governmental activities, you don't have any difference type activity. So it's all governmental activities, and it has a long-term focus, it has capital assets, it has long-term debt, and it's similar to financial statements you find in the corporate world. Now, the fund financial statements that start right after that are a little bit different. They've got a short-term focus, so there's no capital assets, no long-term debt, really focused on your current spendable resources, similar to how you budget. This presented by major fund, and then the two minor funds are combined, showing that just says as one column. And then on pages nine and 11, there's a reconciliation that will figure how you convert from that short-term focus to that long-term focus. After that, on pages 12 through 37, is a lot of additional information that supports the basic financial statements I just talked about. And you should be ready for jumping to that. After that, we get into the required supplementary information that starts on page 38. I may refer to this as RSI. A point out here, too, we give limited procedures on the required supplementary information, but not enough. And this has information budget versus actual report for your general fund, and then additional information on your participation in the only municipal primary fund, and then your other post-employment benefit plan, the entire of that. After that, of the combining individual fund financial statements and schedules, broken up by major governmental funds and the non-major governmental funds. So these have a lot of budget versus actual reports and a lot more detailed information on those particular schedules. And then after that, the final section is the stat section. You're gonna see it has information on financial trends, revenue capacity, debt capacity, demographic, demographic and economic information, and then operating information as well. So a lot of good 10-year time data in there. A lot of the information, probably a little more interesting to the non-accounting and somebody else's information, but a lot of interesting historical information in those schedules. Then after that, there's some SEC disclosures that are required, these are also, I know, that's on pages eight one through eight five. So that's kind of what's in the report. It's eight five pages, so I know it's a lot of information. After that, then I want to point out the independent auditor's report that starts on page one. Like I said, there's some new auditing standards that we adapted for fiscal year 2022. Like I said, changed the format, some of the content, and we'll look at that a little bit more closely this year. The opinion section now, as you can see, is the very first section of the report, so it's not. Usually it's in the second, third page, so it's right up at the front. And again, this year, in this second paragraph, we issued an unmodified opinion, besides all the which rights I invited to the district. After that, on page two, there's a section on responsibilities of management for the financial statements. And then the auditor's responsibility to be audited for the financial statements. And in the auditor's section, that very first paragraph, I'll go through this because there's some new wording in here. In first sentence, our objectives are to obtain reasonable currents about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement, whether it be a fraud or error, and then the issue of report that includes our opinions. It goes on to explain that reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, but it's not absolute assurance. So there's a chance that material misstatement could occur and would not be detected by the auditor. It goes on to state that obviously fraud is much more difficult to detect than the error, including forgery, collusion, management override of these things. So much more difficult to detect. And then the last sentence, misstatements would be considered to be material if there's substantial likelihood that individuals are going to be aggravated and influence the judgment made by the user based on the financial statements. So it has to be material, materiality comes into play. So in hypothetical situation, if you didn't report $5,000 of accounts payable in the general fund, that's not really going to change the opinion of the use of the, or change the judgment of the statements. If you didn't report 20 million in long-term debt, that's probably going to change the judgment. So materiality comes into play, and it does include some judgment. And then the last thing I'll point out in the independent auditor's report on page three is just, this discusses what kind of opinion or that we're not giving an opinion on the various sections. So as I said before, the required supplementary information, you do perform limited procedures, but not enough to give. The supplementary information is that second section, and that's those combining individual fund financial statements and schedules that I pointed out previously. You give an in relation to opinion on those, those schedules, so basically in relation to the basic financial statements that they're already stated. And then the other information, as I stated previously, is the introductory and statistical section, as well as the SEC information. That information, we don't give an opinion on. What we do do is we leave the information, we make sure it's not really made consistent with the basic financial statements or otherwise material misstatement. And if it were to be, then we would communicate that to you. Obviously, nobody was misstating. So that's the report, a little bit different this year, I want to point that out. And then right after that is management discussion and analysis. As I said, this is prepared by Andy, provides a great overview of the district's financial position and governance and financial position, point out any significant trends or changes that may have occurred throughout the year. Has some three-year comparative data that you can't find elsewhere on the report. And cut it down about two pages from the previous year, so it will be easier to read, more of an executive summary. So if you only want to read one thing in the whole eight five page document, read it in there to provide you a overview of the district's financial. After that, I'm gonna skip down into the governmental fund financial statements, so we'll start on page seven. Credito is governmental fund that had that short-term focus. I just want to highlight the general fund, which is the very first column on page seven. And. Get on to page eight. Down to the bottom is the fund balance, this is kind of your what you retain during the corporation. But the unassigned amount is the very last section. You'll see there's a balance of about $3.1 million, which is an increase from the prior year's $2.9 million. And that represents about 33% of the current year expenses, so it's about a full month reserve consistent with the prior year. And then on page 10, is the income statement, statement of revenues expenditures, which can be determined by the governmental fund. And again, the first column is the general fund. You'll see about two-thirds of the way down, there's an excess of revenues over expenditures. So that's 356,000 last year, pretty consistent with the prior year. Prior year excess was about 250,000 dollars. There's another financing source for sale of capital assets, and then the net change in fund balance with a size of 420 dollars.
Then we find that page seven. In a second. A little bit. So there's the, after the MDA, there's such basic financial statements. And then he's giving the page number for that, because it started with. Page seven or eight.
So seven and eight is the balance sheet for your governmental fund.
And I'll add that, on seven and eight, you've seen that before, you've seen it on a monthly basis, that aligns exactly with what we present to you each month. The only difference is we provide you an individual statement for each fund, rather than sticking them on one page, just because it's easier to look at and understand. And so if you go back and look at what we provided in March, it's years, what this is shown very closely on the financial statements. What he's about to talk, what he's about to talk about, we get into the government, government-wide, kind of the full accrual. Some doesn't have a really a lot of impact years aboard, because we're, you know, managing by that kind of cash basis accounting to align with the lobby, to align with, you know, the budgeting. But it would have, might have, you know, very somebody working outside of this, a lender, one of the rating agencies, something like that. And it's required, it's a mandatory thing, it's not something that we choose to do. So I would focus on the one of the, that we do.
So yeah, those are those, like I said. Sorry, on pages seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, those are your, those short-term focused financial statements, similar to how you guys get talent. And then the last section I'll talk about, I'll point this out every year, is in the required supplementary information, and that's on page 39. That's towards the middle of the report. Give you a chance to catch up there. So page 39 is the schedule of employer contributions for the Illinois municipal retirement fund. So what this shows you is, the first line is the actuarially determined contribution, so this is what the actuary at I M R F said you should be contributing. You can see every year you contribute exactly what you should be, so there's no excess or deficiency. And then the last percentage of the contributions, or the percentage of color payroll, kind of gives you an idea of what the pension burden is. So it takes those contributions and divides it by the color payroll to kind of give you an idea of how much you're paying your pensions. You'll see, it's really been consistent from 2016 to 2022, it's been hovering right around 11, 12 percent pretty much the entire time. And then the last schedule is on page 40 and 41. This is the whole schedule of changes in player's net pension liability and the rate of ratio. And this basically shows you your funded status. So the very first section on page 40 is the total pension liability. This is what the actuary determines your liability is as of December 31st. Illinois municipal retirement fund has a plan year end of 1231. The information is at 1231 each year. So that's what the liability is calculated as, the plan for the entry in that position is what the investments you have set aside at I M R F for those liabilities. And then the difference between the two is either a net pension liability or it's a net pension asset. You can see for 2021, for the first time since 2015, or the first time in the entire seven years that we present here, it's actually an asset of about $641,000. And then the funded ratio at that very first percentage, who's 41, so you'll see there about 102.16% funded, about a 10% funded increase in the prior year. On 2022, with the investments going the way they are, that may not stay that way, but this liability is, is obviously, it's a moving target, there's a lot of long-term assumptions, investments in, in fluctuate, so it's kind of a moving target. But as of now, you've got an asset plus $641,000. So that's all I have on the annual comprehensive financial report. Want to talk about the board communication report, which is that smaller report with the black colors. And in this report, I'll start in the table of contents, too. We have a color letter on page one, then there's some required communication that we have to have with the board every year that's required by accounting standard. That's on pages two through four. This year, that communication was pretty routine, nothing significant in there. We did, as we say, the 98th meeting for the name of the report to the annual comprehensive financial report. So pretty minor changes there. Didn't have any delays in the audit, no disagreements with management at all, so pretty routine communication there, that's on pages two through four. Now typically, we would think they'd have audit adjustments that we found, so these are the adjustments found during our audit process. Didn't have any audit improvements this year. And we also didn't have any what we call past adjustments, very likely. These were entries that would be a material that above a certain floor or a certain dollar amount, we had to delegate that to the boards, we didn't have any past adjustments to it. So. Like Andy said, you know, Jean and the team, they do a great job preparing for the eyes, having them really fully adjusted, so they do a really great job. Very rarely do you have a why, you know, no adjustments. It's a great job by the, by the entire management team. And then the management wire starts on page five. Go to page six. What this report basically says in writing is that we had no material weaknesses. We also didn't have any significant deficiencies. We didn't also have any new efficiency this year, and prior year comments, we didn't have any prior year comments last year. I think the last one was, was addressed in the prior year, post 34, so. With that, we have an answer on the questions that you might have, either of those two of them. You can just talk a minute about the statement and after the statement, they made some improvement there, the 5%. It's on page three. On to our MDA. Yes. We made a three. Was it? So. It was the last paragraph in the page.
Lord, help us. Where are you at?
So this is page three of the MDA section, it's in the financial section.
So the page number, I can see, I have the three at the bottom.
Yeah. And there's a paragraph, the last paragraph on that page.
Yeah, so a big portion of that gain really represents the profit tax, you know, that comes in from that service. And under the fund accounting, we show those payments and the principal bonds, the suspense. On the full accrual, they're not, right? It's just a reduction in principal, so you have kind of a net gain every year, just from that alone is a big piece of it.
My next, great numbers.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then if you look on page. Page six will show you the, the change. On the actual, actual page six, that statement of activity, that'll show you that that increase in change in value.
Hey, Andy, I was seeing you have, it's from the the communication from page two, can I get a copy of the scope that was dated September 15th, 2020?
Maybe I can engage the audit.
Yeah.
Yeah, just.
Spoil the audit.
It was dated 2020. Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah. It was in 2020. Yeah. Two year.
Okay. Well, this is always an education for me. You didn't have any accounting classes in my formal education, and so I appreciate the patience and thoroughness. And again, I think the board is learning how fortunate we are to have Andy and his crew, who consistently do a good job and, and. I think we have that reassurance that the I's are being dotted and that these are being crossed, and we appreciate your confirmation of that. And then if you have any suggestions to the staff or to us, we certainly are open to them if you at this time or any time.
Yeah, absolutely. That's all we'll typically communicate in the board communication part, so if there is any suggestion.
Well, then. If there's no.
Yeah, just so that's where you would include it, you don't do like a second memo or anything to the board. And be the management.
Yeah, it would, it would be in the, if there was any deficiency or material weakness or significant deficiency, we would include it. Now, we do, it's not required to have efficiency in writing, so there's a chance we could have like a verbal.
Right, that's, that's kind of like.
Yeah.
We could potentially verbally.
Right.
Okay. And we had some errors that were found in past years, where they showed a weakness, material deficiency, and some of the steps we had taken for the, that was provided. So.
Could you share that with me?
I'll kind of go back, yeah.
I just like to sort of how it's presented.
Yeah, I think there was one two years ago, that was clear.
It has to do with a grant or something that we were aware that would put off, and if we find out three months or six months, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that might have been. That's, that's the other one.
And one of the things after, on Thursday, we went and set, you know, except the audit is presented, and then we published it in part transparency form. So we lead multiple years up, so anyone that's looking from a financial position, whether it was year after year, it's a great place for public communication to share how the district is storing air.
Great. I'm used to seeing usually a call out that some processes, procedures aren't being followed properly, like proper, you know, means of authority and things like that. Seeing none of that here, the decision processes are robust, they're being utilized, and it's good to see.
Well, on that positive note, we're gonna excuse them and thank them again for, for coming to visit with us.
Thanks again for your time.
You're welcome. I can, we have a busy schedule, so let's, let's move forward, and next is five point two. And we have a presentation of snowmobile request, and so, was it Ed or John? I think you all listed. People who might have something to say.
Well, I'll go ahead and start, just to give the board a little bit of background. This section had a lot of information, because this started with a request that came to the district in December 17th of 2020. And during that time, the staff then took that for an initial review of the site at the Kuyan Mackel site to add additional trail link there. We presented that on August 19th of 2021 to the board, and provided kind of staff's recommendation of positions at that time, which the board conferred, which was to do nothing of that to be fine. Then in January 13th of 2022, an additional refined request of how the trail would lay out to the site was presented, and since that time, staff has begun to go our regular process. When requests for new additional trails and site amenities are added, we normally go through a master plan process to review. In this case, a master plan has not been done for the Kuyan, so we did put it through just an initial evaluation process, which Ed will speak to. And there's many areas of the district that we look at things, we look at things from a natural resource science perspective, we look at how we use the property, and then from a planning perspective, and in this case, what we present, or what we have in the material tonight, is a recommendation from staff as to why we do not recommend at this time that that trail be placed in these locations. I'm gonna turn it over to Ed to speak to the natural resource side. I do have some of the maps that we provided as well. If that's helpful to you with the different layers of there, so I'll have to be nice to him with this.
Well, just do some opening comments, and we'll work it, I had Brad Woodson, our natural resource manager, here in person, and Cindy Jablonski, our wildlife ecologist, is online, so they can go into greater depth with any questions you might have related to the wildlife in particular involved. But I'll start by saying, there's been a very, very long history of cooperation between the district and the snowmobile club. And that has been on everything from trail expansion to grooming to grants, and of course, I, that will continue into the future. This is one request out of what have been many, many requests over the years. But I want to highlight the fact that this has been a pretty cooperative relationship over the decades. Another thing I like to talk about is that we're increasingly dealing with wildlife and human interactions in McHenry County, and how they relate to our sites, and what goes on them, and how they relate to the healthy wildlife populations. Just in the past 10 years, we've had bears, cougars, antiparwool show up in McHenry County, which happened to be isolated individuals passing through. We had populations that rebounded on badgers, river otters, and wild turkeys, which were not on district sites when the district was formed in, in the 1970s, but they returned. And finally, we have now nesting ospreys, eagles, and for the first time this year, we've had a nest of trumpeter's ones, which 25 or 30 years ago were extirpated east of Mississippi River and are recovering. So this has been a valuable process for us, because this is not going to be the last time we have a human interaction with a wildlife population, where we have to make decisions on, on how to accommodate both, or which one we need to accommodate as opposed to the other one. Our staff monitored the second request through the entire growing season, our plant ecologist Lori Ryan did that, and there were no species listed, state listed species found on the right away, so there was not a vegetation reason. But staff did some very extensive research on wildlife populations, in particular breeding bald eagles. And, and that's why you see the recommendation from a natural resource perspective, not to create an addition in this particular instance. You have the report there, Brad is available to answer questions, and I guess that would be kind of the end of my introduction to them.
Does anyone have any?
So Ed, you're saying is you, you, you don't recommend, okay.
In this particular instance. We have three bald eagle nests in McHenry. We have three bald eagle nests in McHenry County. At this point, we're likely to have more going into the future. So this is definitely not going to be the last time we deal with a breeding eagle, human interaction somewhere. But I think that the information that was uncovered related to federal jurisdiction and federal protections for bald eagle and eagles. Brad can speak to it in more detail if you'd like that.
The only thing I would add is the timing couldn't be worse. So bald eagles that begin their fourth or their nest building, nest building right at the time of the snowmobile season, and that would be the absolute worst time. So if it was, you know, this time of year, late summer, early fall, there would be no conflict. Since that's when they're doing their nest building, that's when the snowmobile season is. They start their very early nest. So that's a conflict. Time and location. So one trail and the option one is completely out. That's across an old concrete bridge. And the other one, in our opinion, is too close as well. It's right adjacent to the property. In fact, there's a and there's a lane that goes across a little creek, that's about five hundred fifty feet. And then at the edge of the property, it's going here. It's about eleven hundred feet, but there's no buffer. It's all open ag field. So everything like that would be a conflict.
Elizabeth, could you put up that map that was these, like the snowmobilers' map of trails in McHenry County?
Um, let's see if I can find it. I do not add that to the PowerPoint.
I have some question. Is that is that based on noise or just pollution?
It's no, it's mainly noise and yeah, noise and even visual disturbance as well. So if you're going to more advice with quotes, well, that's in the bald eagle management guide. They talk about some of those things. Noise is probably the most critical one. But if there were, you know, high speed, you both could be more excited. Something near the nest, and that would cause them to abandon the nest or or not eat today or whatever.
Is the is the distance clear or is it judgments or?
So in in the bald eagle management guidelines, they talk about different levels. So three hundred thirty feet, six hundred sixty feet or more. So it's 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 if it's a new nest and it's in a particular area, it could be a large buffer, but if they become accustomed. So you there's some situations where bald eagles have nested in a site and they get accustomed. So that's even something they talk about and recommendations. If it's something new, like fireworks display, that would be something new, would be a form of distraction. But if it's just homeowners or a farmer going up and down where they're used to that, then that's like, then they seem to be accustomed to it. So it's not something we can drive. It's something that, you know, the bald eagles like to live in front or not. That's the problem.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, the back way going to Belvedere, I don't know if that on Woodstock Road or something, kind of jog back and forth in this creek, there the road goes right by the this nest up in that tree.
I don't want to.
Yeah, and that's not very far. And I don't know, there are two or three nests been there forever.
Yeah, well, not forever, but not forever. No, but you're right. And so that's the whole thing is they chose that spot. They chose that spot with the road there. It's in kind of that pasture situation.
Yeah.
So they are accustomed to that amount of road traffic. But if you were to do something new to that, then you might, you know, disrupt that. And that's so they they chose that spot based on as is conditions. And then that's what we have to consider is, you know, when they selected it, they they were accustomed to that traffic. It's that one's probably three or four hundred feet off the road.
You're right.
Somewhere in there.
Sure. There's a conservation area kind of on the west side of that creek or ditch over there.
Yeah, so I mean, it's it's the roads there, but everything else.
Right. I guess I just, they still will be at the snowmobile season is like three days a year. Round here, maybe, but you know. And then it might.
Yeah, and and I I was thinking about the same thing. And and the problem with with that is if those three days, if it's three days of not incubating, incubating days, and that's a problem. So I mean, that's that's what we have to, you know, that's what we have to say.
I would also add too that there is a period of life cycle, the eagle nest. They're not there for long. So eagles will sometimes abandon, sometimes trees will fall down here and eagle will already die. So you look at this really as as a temporary call for a situation that exists at this time. Whether that situation exists five years or ten years from now is problematical. Trees do come down from the weight of the nest and situations change.
So though you may ask for an overall, and I and I did not prepare that to bring, but I can provide that to everybody. Overall, the Kennedy County Snowmobile Trail System, the request, as you recall, and I can just show on this map. The original request was the one that was in red, and that kind of went around the property and that we had the initial issue with the bridge and and some of the other things that we had studied at that time. Their second request was then to take it down Queen Anne Road and then kind of carve out, go along the border of our property to the one parcel that is and what we don't have. And for those reasons, I don't have it shown on this map. And the new materials, we did show the location of bald eagle as well as the we have the bioreactor out on the site, plus on the hunting zones that also took place during that time.
Well, I I don't snowmobile, so I don't have any personal interest. And when I looked at the map, it seemed like there were by the, it's quite a bit of snowmobiling around Blaisfield Park. And then there's quite a bit of snowmobiling in the more western and southern part of the county. And there's, I'm not sure that there's a connection between sort of the northeastern and the and southwestern. And I'm not sure what the objective of this trail was. Was it to try to join up those to be a link between those two major areas?
I I don't know. I mean, I was just approached by the.
Yeah, right. So I I mean.
So many of the snowmobile trails, they're not all on district property.
Right.
They run through private land and.
Most of them are through private land.
And then there's Illinois, something, something, a bunch of initials in that area that was in the lower left part of the map.
Right. There's the Illinois Snowmobile Association, and we work and Terry's here. That's been him on the spot that manages between his team on the snowmobile use, which you'll see next month, that we they help maintain the trails. We work to give grants together with them because it has to be a public entity to groom the trails. So it's a very collaborative, but and the trails don't lean that. The clubs manage their certain zones. And some of them on district property were preexisting when we acquired the property. They were held privately and then we retained because if we would have taken them out unless there was a reason, it would have obviously disrupted preexisting.
Is it anyone else want to make a comment?
Just say, our charter is both recreation and conservation. But I think we leave more to put conservation and recreation. So I'm inclined to support the goals.
And I think Ed's point is this isn't a forever type of decision. If that tree falls down or the eagles move out or something changes, uh, staff and the board, I think, would reconsider. So any additional comments?
I think they should.
How would you like to proceed back? Because if the request came through, would you like me to?
Yeah, I think that's something from you. So yeah. Why respond to your.
Well, thank you and thank Ed and his crew for all the research and continuing to educate the board.
That's.
Yeah. All right. So we go to new business. And we have a regular meeting on Thursday. And with the agenda has been published. And hopefully the justice agent had a chance to look at it. I don't know if anyone has any comments about what's on the agenda or knows if they want to pull something or make some change. Otherwise, I have nothing further to say about the agenda.
Any questions under the.
We're going to talk about some of these things later in the meeting today. All right. So six point two is the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget discussion. Specifically, the capital asset management fund. So gentlemen, how would you like to?
So there's two parts to this tonight, and I'll start. We have two different teams that can answer the questions. At your desk, proceed to print out so you can receive a legible Excel sheet on the capital projects for our planning, when operations team has the built environment. And then also several years ago, we made a commitment to mapping our natural capital and the work that needs to be done there as well. So Andy, do you want to provide an overview? I know you have placed out the resources and the expectant total expense that you can draw down for this. And then the meeting with Ed. Amy and Terry.
Sure. Yeah. In the board summary, it basically combines the total capital asset management plan to bring some order with the proposed thought of the map of capital asset plan. It's presented by natural resource department and this team. For the three combined years, it shows a total three point seven million dollars of projects proposed. Then I break down the funding and based on the projections I had done against the board in August, you know, looking at the reserves and the usable reserves going forward. We think that was about three million dollars would be available for crowdfunding. And again, as predicated on, you know, what the spend is each year going forward, this three point four and five and six, how much we actually spend. Again, twenty two, we budgeted a six hundred thousand dollar deficit. And we had a four hundred thousand dollar surplus, right? So we made a big difference going forward. So on paper, everything played out the way some of the senators look. There'd be reasonable funding here. And again, it doesn't include the grant recoveries and another million and a half. I think the real focus tonight, and usually in the recent, you know, past year, is that looking at what are we looking for in the next fiscal year, point four, as far as the budget process? Because that capital asset management plan fund, which will fund these capital projects, you know, that's part of the fiscal budget that we'll have to put together. So the direction we get tonight and or on the fifteen will then guide the budget for the real projects. So with that, my suggestion would be to turn it over, I guess, to John.
Amy and Terry.
Okay. So and then I guess I'll I will turn it over to Amy and and leave it up to the board. Do you want her to walk through all the projects where that are on the camp? Or if you want to have the other chance to look at it, just go through questions or how you guys want to.
Does anyone have anything specific that's asked that we go through the projects, but I would say the highlights?
Okay. Highlights.
Perfect.
Do you have, do you have the dedicated in front of you parts, which is one through four? Is that first? Or do you have the larger? And, you know, one through twenty six, I just want to get on the same page.
It's one page or both.
Yeah.
Okay.
Part of this is yours upcoming.
So let's go through the easy one first, since it's only four projects. You guys hear me already?
Yeah.
And these are the ones that are grants related.
Don't stand at the little. I think that's good. Big charge in the room.
Sure. Yes, yep. It should say dedicated account for the O two fence. And this is just one year. This is just the year twenty twenty four. So everybody with me. So the first one is hollows. It's a lake at wood. It is a grant that we've already applied for. Last year, we were hoping to hear in March of this year that we would be awarded. It's for the ADA canoe launch, canoe kayak launch. And so that's already submitted. It's a seventy thirty grant. That's why you see the total project at one fourteen. And then what we would be getting back to be reimbursed is the eighty. Again, we have a canoe launch there. And this is just constructing an easier egress ingress. There's different methods out there. This would be an aluminum sort of deck and pier. Again, it's a ramp that then allows an individual to transfer from a wheelchair on its own into the kayak or canoe and 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 get in and out of the water. Again, we have a same location that we currently have, just a traditional asphalt ramp. But again, we're we're hopeful and remain hopeful. We met on site with the grant administrator. So this is very competitive this year. And obviously, the state has a lot of many things going on right now. So they are, not only is it competitive, but there's a lot of different grants that are going out that they're short-staffed and having to go through. So we're we'll remain hopeful for that. I'm going to jump down to number four, just because it's the same site. So at the hollows, Lake Atwood again has an existing trail. It's approximately a mile around the full length of loop of the lake at wood. But it's it's a mixture of some asphalt right at the trailhead. There's some gravel. There's some dirt. There's some grass. What we proposed in or what we're proposing, because we've again, haven't submitted it yet. It would be an oscillate grant. Again, if you're right through IDNR, it would be to improve that to a hard surface that would make it all ADA accessible. Again, it ties right into then our boat launch. Any other, again, there's a few others, some signage, making that trail maybe accessible for winter use and that could be seen. So again, all those things, we're hoping to have the deadline of that grant is the thirtieth of September. So we are working on that. But I think you saw that in last in last budget or last board meeting. And then the other two are, one is Glashaw Park, the number two is a snowmobile grant. That's something we've already gotten. So again, from budgeting and principle of standpoint, we have to list out what we are. And so we're working on that. That signage, and that's just some trail improvements and areas where there's, you know, either some wet areas or that sort of thing. So that's something that we already have coming towards us.
Do they, so Snowmobile Group know that?
Yes. So and Perry can talk in detail. It's a cooperative. Again, they apply for us.
Yes, so it's it's an annual grant. You see, it's divided in twenty and ten thousand. The twenty thousand includes the fuel for the warming machines here.
I feel like I don't actually know.
As well as the trail improvements, maybe we back in on the bridge. There there are signs that you put in, you know, throughout the counties. The ten thousand, if you see something that's going, then that'll be, which is pretty much our new design through the district and the Snowmobile Group. And we looked it out last year. They said, hey, we did split ten thousand for improved signage. And not just the snowmobile trails. So it would be, that would be your take for the bridge they'll know. So any of your major intersections, try and grow a road and one seventy three, we just made improvements there with the signage because it's outdated. We can continue along that corridor. So it would serve our purpose year round, as well as snowmobile, since the great trail more, as it does manage. So as we see there, the point of the ten thousand.
I'm just thinking this helps to put a little salve on the wound of saying no for the expansion of the other track.
We have, we have a great relationship. We meet with them annually, over a checklist on what we can do. We're cooperative as well on including those.
Are there more than one snowmobile club? I think there's several.
There's there's a lot.
Every community.
There you are.
And then the last is also at Glashaw Park. And just to be confusing to you all, it's a component. This this particular furniture is a component to a few others on the next couple of pages. Improvements that we need to do the LVC, some exterior painting of the entire building. And we would like to put in an electric vehicle charging station. And so this one is a tourism grant. And again, it's on the agenda tonight. John's going to talk a little bit more about it. And so I'm jumping the gun here, but that that's something that we value engineered when we first did the Lost Valley Visitor Center. You know, it's our it's our largest visited site. We have that lovely patio. We have picnic tables, whole picnic tables. And so this was just a way of, you know, it was attracting and tying some of the maintenance and some of the upkeep that it's really needed. And we're hoping to have that be, you know, something that brings the money. And so it's just nice outdoor furniture for the the event that's held. Any questions on those?
Well, in in general, if we submit a grant proposal, and obviously we have plans to do something, we don't commit to construction until we get, till we know whether we have the grant. We don't commit to construction until we get, till we know whether we have the grant in hand.
So that's a, that's a great, that's the great difference, it's a great segue into the two, the two lists. So, again, because we're limited right now, almost everything is something that we need. Um, you know, to do, it's large, at large infrastructure improvements, replacements, updates. And so we're trying to maximize something that we have on that camp list that we need to do. But what can we get, you know, a little bit of new? And how do we, how do we get funding assistance for, so that we can do more of those, because we just have that long list? Um, and so that is the focus, there's very little that's. New initiatives, there's a few, but they're small, and like I said, they're tied into then that larger. And infrastructure, um, need that we, um, that we were preparing and that we've already committed funds to doing. Right, to make that money go farther and get done what we need to get done, we, we've got to take care of what we have first. Um, cause we have a lot, and we have a lot that needs, um, you know, some, some attention, it's just old infrastructure. But yes, that was, that was perfect, so now this list. Um, I won't go in all detail since there's more of them, we broke them down into categories. So the first eight are, are regional trail, and we have five regional trails, but you'll see all Prairie Trail. All eight projects are Prairie Trail related, and that again is just sheer, um, length. It's capacity, it's our oldest, it was the first one that went in, um, it's our most highly used, um. From a standpoint of just numbers. And, um, so we have them in different phases, some are engineering, some are construction. Um, the first four are all things that we're working on this year. But again, they just take the usually two-year, three-year projects that just have to keep rolling over. It's engineering, first phase permitting, um, then construction, and so, um. Those are two in Ringwood. Um. And, um, those are due to drainage issues of various different types. And so we're, we're still gonna go out for bid for those here yet, we have a grant for one of them. Um, so we will be getting fifty thousand dollars, um, reimbursed for that number two, that Prairie Trail link that's, um. Uh, south of Barnardville Road, we did apply for that, and we have, we have received or were rewarded that. Um. Project three is the one that we have that we'll discuss a little bit later, so I won't go into detail about that. Um, the two, um, three ones that we, that we're not reimbursed. So that is, um, the section between Hillside and Lorraine. That's where Stern's Woods is, for those of you that are familiar with that. And, um, it's, it's nature preserve, it's very hilly, you either love it or hate it. Um, you know, and they want, yeah, um, they want more, but they're, but it is dangerous. So there, there's a number of things that we can improve upon, make it safer, still have it be the fun that it is for those that are, you know, um. Much better riders than, you know, uh, myself, so, um, what we're proposing there in, um. What do we have, there's an engineering phase, it's in five. Um. No, and in four, I'm sorry, and then a construction, so we split that into two phases, into two different years, just because of timing and capacity. Um. Six is the section, and again, we have to do these inflections instead of doing the whole twenty-six miles, because. Again, just capacity and timing, um, of doing that, so this then is a section from Edgewood to Hillside. And again, we prioritize this, we walk through it annually, um. And assess sort of what the conditions are, what is priority, um, what are safety issues, what can we do in-house? But that project, we can do in-house, um, with our Glacial Park checks that we have. Um, and save some money in engineering, uh, but then the money that you see is for construction of it, so that's why you see it pushed back. Um, in twenty twenty-six, just because we're, um, we're getting new teammates and, and hopefully we'll be able to do that. Um, Harts Road, number seven, it's just the intersection, um, the Prairie Trail crosses Harts Road into, in Glacial Park. We just want to update it, it's on a hill, um, on site, it's kind of, um, sketchy. Um, so we would like to do some, uh, maybe a flashing beacon and just do our detectable warning to just do the updates, normal updates that we need on all of our intersections between pedestrians and vehicles. And the last one, um, is a bridge. We have a num, we have, uh, how many bridges do we have? I think we've got a lot. This is the engineering of, um, the one that we, is most critical in, in the north. You'll see again on some duplicates coming up with foundation asks and grant asks. Um, just because those are big ticket, you know, dollar signs, so that we want to be able to plan for those. And again, they're, they're old, they've never been redone. Yes, yes, please.
The bridge compares with the placements, and you see on the one thirty-five, ten year study, whatever you need. We do have engineers coming out, and those are several inspections. So it's based on condition of the bridge, the age of the bridge, some of these bridges are under the bridges, rebel bridges. They're still, you know, they're, they're, they're built last one time. You know, the bottom ones are, and then maybe with, uh, uh, you know, the super strength of the bridge, uh, on the backing. Uh, that will dictate, um, whether or not it's an replacement or repair, even your, your buttons, uh, making some, uh, water repair. You know, the, uh, uncertain shifts, so then this is all based on engineering inspections, so we started very old with this. And we will, our attention, mostly inspected about every three to four years. Our new core ten steel bridges that have been installed, one in Prairie Trail, so, and as well as Prairie Trail link. Uh, which is our asphalt trail. Those are on about a ten year study, because those are the bridges that were just installed, that's five to ten years. So it's based on age condition, uh, on the inspections of those bridges and how we budget according to the report. And there's about, when I say a lot, I'm saying, you know, along that, you know, trail. Uh, we probably have about three bridges that are on inspection schedule, just to work, continue in the property.
And a great point about, to add on to that, is that our engineer then gives us, you know, a short term, you know, something that. What, what can we do in the meantime to defer the, the large replacement or that sort of thing? So always have multiple options of, you know, so that we can work it in with the, the rest of the budget of what we have, so that's a great point. Um. Any questions on regional trail project? Conservation, um, area projects, um, this year, um, these are some smaller fillers of some of our higher used sites. And some things that we just deferred, so, um, for a number of years. Um, so the Marango Ridge, there is the trailhead, the main parking lot. Um, the trail that goes from there to the shelter, it's just old, it needs, um, attention, and so that is what this project would do, would update those. Um, the north branch, um, again, very popular, um, trail. Start and stopping point, it has a, a large permeable, um. Pavement patio, and it's just, it, it's needs to be, it needs the fill, it needs to get cleaned out. And, um, in order for it, it's our detention, it's our stormwater, um, so it needs to be maintained, and so that's the number for that. Um, Pleasant Valley, the Stone Amphitheater, I don't know if any of you have been out there, but do go out there, it's a lovely spot, and it's, um. Uh, highly used for weddings, it's still pretty rustic though, so this is just some, um. I'm making some tweaks here and there that have come back from the public use. Um, again, just little things here and there, filling in some stone, maybe adding, um, some screens on the shelter so that in the summer, the bugs aren't. Um, you know, carrying away the, uh, broom, um, so those are the little things. Um, bridges and boardwalks, again, back to Perry's comment, um. We're trying to get even all of the smaller sites, smaller bridges on a, on a schedule, and so these, um, are, are now part of that. Um, the Boca Bob is a pretty little site in Bull Valley, um, one of the earlier projects of two thousand that we put in a boardwalk. And it just means, um, again, it's, it, the, the, the grade has changed underneath, so we need to get underneath that. Um, and that's what that cross did is to make it level, it's, it's, it's not ADA right now. Um, it can be with the support and replacement resetting of those cures. And then, um, the Philco triple R, again, high new site. Um, these are inherited bridges, um, that we, that we have, and so we want to be able to, we haven't ever taken a look at them, um. They're old, and how can we improve them, make them better and last another twenty-five years? Um, roadways and parking lots, you know, asphalt has a lifespan. Um, and so again, um, the, the Brookdale specifically here has been deferred. Um, we had a little bit of money this year that we just said, let's, let's push that off and let's do it all in one, because it's all in sort of piecemeals. Again, we inherited some, we, um, we made some improvements, so that's a number to, um, redo all of it. Um, and, and make that easier to maintain in the future, again, we can do the inside in that, the design and, and documents in-house. Um, Glacial Park again, that parking lot, um, is again for new cameras, it's just part of, um, from a LEED certified standpoint, what we have to do. And so it's just that permeable pavement, um, clean out and replace to aggregate base. Um, the Rush Creek Maintenance or Mechanic Facility and Asphalt, this is something that's been deferred for years now. Um, and while it is a staff facility, um, we just feel that it's a high priority because it's all staff, everyone comes there to fuel up. Um, everyone comes there for the mechanic, um, and, and so it's, the, the asphalt is just old, and needs to be replaced, so that's, um, what that project is. Um, the last, the next two, how to do a building, the first one is demolition, it's the one we're currently working on, um, it's the Glacial Park. Um, three buildings that we're demoing, the football building, the intern house, and the old research field station, we're just carrying that over, we'll hope, we're gonna get it started. Um, but again, it'll take till the spring to get that finished. And then the rest of what we were spending on demo projects, we really need to put towards, um, improving. The current conditions of where we have staff and where we have, um, people coming, so we, we were, we're changing focus. And wanting to do some improvements to the buildings that we have. So again, it's, um, those larger, um, higher use, so Philpro, we have an existing, um, restroom and shelter that again, the district inherited. It needs new plumbing. Um, Silver Creek is our, it's our Prairie View, um, facility, it's the shop there, again, inherited that building. Don't believe we've ever had any improvements, yeah, the exterior is, um, in dire need of replacement, we've got some, um. You know, water damage, um, so that's sealing up that envelope. Um, Glacial Park has a number of the rest of these buildings, so again, we. Um, and Perry, jump in here if I'm skipping over anything too quickly, but the Agrivo, um, has a shop facility, and we talked a little bit at last, at last board meeting. That's where our natural resource management, um. Team, one of our, our north team works out of, um, we had that inspected again by the same, um, structural engineer. Yes, we have, um, some issues with the roof, it's nothing that is, um, urgent, that, meaning everybody get out. Um, but yeah, we have several years before we need to come in and replace that, and this is the estimate based off of what his recommendation was. Um, and in the year, right, that we, that, that we thought was important. Um, obviously, and it just has a sprinkler, I don't, and, uh, repair that has.
But so.
Yeah.
We've had some, uh, water line issues with the air suppression system. Uh, most, we had to discuss, you know, those repairs we made, the new street repairs. Uh, so we did have the inspector coming, taking a pulse, looking at the VDC air suppression system. And then we went and, uh, system in that, uh, in that building. Um, inspector came back with his report, and said basically, it was, um, installed in one small section of mine that needs to be replaced. But then he also recommended, you know, pumps to be replaced, since the system now is, we were told, you said. Um, so we, we'll watch for that under operations, that we mark three to five thousand dollars. So that twenty-five thousand dollar amount is just further down the road for us to do this. Cause we get, you know, uh, as we can not put inspections, it should be that, well, the better and wonderful, but that's certainly, uh, it's a place for me.
The, uh, number twenty-two is the exterior painting. Um, just, it means that it gets beat up, um, and that's one of them that we are applying for a grant for. Um, that we talked a little bit about was the furniture. Um, twenty-three and, and twenty-four are the future conversation based off of the feasibility study of, that, that we're just starting. Um, on the, you know, the climate building that we had, and so again, they're, they're placeholders. And they're, they're solid placeholders, uh. Um, once we know what we have and what we're wanting, um, this, this twenty-three, the intended, they would then create the plans that we could actually go. Um, and, yeah, we have the flexibility and to, and the timing to, to make that be what we needed to be. And about it, once we have, once we have the study done, we'll have a better handle on, um, where to go with that. And then twenty-four is then, uh, construction of whatever that plan is. Makes sense? The last two then, we already talked about, uh, the new initiative is the, um, the, um, electrical, uh, vehicle charging station. Again, we've done some research, we've identified two locations that would be good starters. One would be at LVC, the other one was at, um, Main Street and Crystal Lake for our Prairie Trail. Um, and so again, we, we would, we put that in a grant, we think we could get, um, grant funding for that. Um, if not the, something tangible that, and, and manageable within, um, our capacity. And then the last one, um, is recognizing that district-wide signage is one of our weaknesses. It's always been, it's always been a goal, it's hard to stay consistent with funding. Um, and capacity, we can do it in-house, and we just had enough people to, um, to have the time to do it, so we're hopeful, so that's why it's pushed out. But it's, we want to recognize it, and we want, um, a significant, yeah, sixty thousand dollars, probably won't do it all. Um, but at least it gets us started, and, um, if we need to have outside help, um, there's companies that do that, so that's just why you see it now. Because we, we, we know that it's, um, something to, um, to try to achieve, make a change on.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Quite a good summary, and we appreciate that, that you talked on the brain.
Okay, shout out to me if anybody's got questions.
What, then the, the, sort of the smaller projects, but they, Pleasant Valley, that stone amphitheater?
Yeah.
You know, given that there's, you know, input from the public, and then it's used for those weddings and all that. You know, the fact that that's out right now scheduled, it's for the upgrade year, that's something that can be reconsidered and look at, so if you are doing so then?
Absolutely, it's a great question, again, it's definitely, um, something that's in our wheelhouse, and we've just had people to, to do the plan sets. So yes, that's why it's there, but it can, any of those that are in either twenty-five or twenty-six. You know, they can, um, construction of them can, can move, and we could be doing the plans in-house in twenty twenty-four. Right, and then, um, adjust the construction, and that will also then, uh, again, once we have. Time, some of those that are out further in twenty twenty-six. Dollar amount could get, you know, tighter as well, because again, right now, I don't have a plan to tell you exactly, those are, they're, they're based off of, you know, my best sort of estimates of what we would want to do. But yes, we would love to do that, it just, um. I need, I need a few more, um, months to get someone in here to help with some of the, of the planning of those future projects, and then yes, you could see those changes.
And we do have one person starting, which the board had agreed for us to bring in, one of the persons we realigned last year with our operations team, back into planning, and they're all starting.
Yes, but I had to have this done before I knew that, so right, yes, this definitely could shift, but it's, it's still the priority. You know, those, those wouldn't change.
If I was planning an event, now that I'm gonna get married, I must pay the cost. Do something at this site. I mean, do we, do they, we earn income from those types of things?
We do.
Hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars.
Um, it's a lot. Okay, it, it depends on the size of the group, yeah, and then what they're requesting. They may request the, as well as the shelter, which typically can be for the, the wedding events. That's based on the sizes, so we have a schedule of prices. It's based on the size of the reservation number of people, it could be a few hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, that's, that I know on that.
I, I would be interested, uh, you know, on the to-do list. Um, if the staff could get the board an idea of, um, how much income we have. how much income we have from such special events across the districts sites. Things at Glacial Park, things here, things there.
All special events or?
All special events.
Yeah, right now, right now, it's just a, just within all of the district sites, shelters, right, have their standard rates depending on size.
How much money does that? Yeah, I think it would be interesting, you know, it would be interesting. When we're, we're being asked to justify spending. And it certainly needs to be maintained and upgraded. But if you demonstrate that it is basically paying for itself over a period of time. It just makes it easier in a second. Right, correct.
Yeah, I would say we'll show you with the rentals, we do with our picnic shelters and that. But I don't think they're positioned as a revenue producing, they're more of added.
Well, it's a service. In other words, let's look at all of this from many different perspectives. And, and so we, we can only learn by having the data, so to speak. And so I, you know, it's a great presentation. And Andy, in the budget part of this, I took away from your presentation that we have the capability to spend on the reserves and do these types of things. And you know, the, the unknown is, you know, something like weather. Does it, we get to it this year, does it get put off till next year? But I certainly didn't see anything in the, in the presentation. That the needs seem you know, out of line. You have big projects, you have little projects, you have things you can get grant funding for. You have things that perhaps the foundation helps out. And obviously you're, you know, you have a to-do list and you're trying to prioritize that to-do list. And we, we appreciate the difficulty sometimes in deciding you know, what priority should be. As far as our meeting tonight, is there anything further you need from us on this issue?
No, if there was anything, and the board has concerns, there's nothing we wanna have removed. There's something that you've heard about or you feel that is not on the list, that should be on the list. That's kind of like a feedback, but this is staff's best, that's reasonable.
I think it's a very good working document and we'll stay tuned.
Yeah, I have a question. So since I'm new, just trying to get an idea of lots of, I read the disclaimer or the footnote at the bottom. And lots of whole numbers, so I'm just kinda wondering who came up with the numbers? And are these like whole numbers in terms of if someone's designing, is that in it?
So the majority of them are a team, myself, Perry. And we have lines of architect. It's based off of our past projects that are similar, that are, that are hard numbers. Right? So bid numbers that we've just done a project in will follow that asphalt, you know, unit price cost. We'll, we'll use it for the, for these, if we have it, you know. And then it also is the engineer. So a number of them that are already designed and engineered, that's an engineer number based off of that specific.
So you've kinda done your footwork, so say, number one to ninety-five, you've got some breakdown of, okay. This is, alright.
Yeah, anything, anything that has already definitely in twenty-twenty-four. And that we have design plans, construction documents for. We have, those are solid numbers. Now again, though, in today's environment.
The question isn't geared towards like how accurate you are. I'm not really concerned about that. I just kinda wanna know how you got to it. And then my next question is, so under each one of these years, you've got a times eight percent, five and five, what are those?
Those, those are inflation.
Okay, so.
They've already been inflated.
Okay.
So you're projecting that all over the project, right?
Right, or, or just, or just they're based off of, right, we know this year's prices. But I'm, you're asking me to project that out in twenty-twenty-six, so there's gonna be some inflation, so those are the numbers that Andy.
Okay.
Had to put on them.
Cause you, you would've looked at this last year, you would've shown me with a different year column, but they were still on the list.
So is the five percent in that? Oh, it is, are you? Okay, okay.
Yep, the five, the eight, eight, the five and the five are already built into that number that you see.
Got it, okay.
Right, you're welcome.
So the shelter, the stone.
Thank you.
Natural capital. Still on the same topic, but we're gonna move to the camp that relates to natural.
And there's, there are only three projects. Let me begin by saying you have a report in front of you, it's a natural capital improvement plan. We began doing this plan in two thousand and nineteen in the formal way. And thus far, the, the first five planned projects that we hope to fund on natural camp, on the capital improvement fund. We've been able to find other assets to deal with. Essentially, we haven't had to tap in to camp for projects since two thousand and nineteen that were on the original list. And that's come as a result of utilizing our in-house assets with the natural resource department. The foundation has been great about raising funds. They have the Big Wood Program, which buys three for us. And we've also gone after other grants and mitigation. So, so far so good, even though we budgeted funds from camp to do that, we were able to find others. And then, and then we're pretty glad that that happened. So going forward, we have three projects coming up this next fiscal year. One is relatively minor, it's for grass cover and formal woods for a reforestation project that we like to do there. Right now, it's very, a few very small agricultural fields, about twenty-some acres in size. They're cut up by fence lines. We don't make a lot of money off of it. And it would allow us to reforest that section of formal woods to focus. And we need to put a cover crop on there in order to do it. The other two are projects that we've come involved with the department. And the first is a Glacial Park. We are partnering with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Open Lands. And the friends at PAC that secured a nine-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-dollar grant from Congresswoman Underwood. And this is for work to be conducted adjoining Glacial Park. So we'll be the direct natural resource recipient of that. It's restoration of about two hundred acres. And we would like to budget around a hundred thousand dollars, so we can do some work on the Glacial Park side of the fence. So not a bad investment for a hundred thousand, we have nine-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars for the work of joining. The second is a little more interesting. It's at the Alden Sedgwick site. There is a lot of money that came out of several federal programs this year. One was America Beautiful Grant Program, which has tens of millions of dollars in it for conservation. But unfortunately for us, in that first year or two, it looks like only tribal groups or states are able to tap into those funds. So we could not apply for them directly. Sean and I tried six ways on Sunday to figure that out, but there were no loopholes. So we did the next best thing. We called up our, our corollaries and IDNR, and they're applying for the grant. They own a piece of property at the Alden Sedgwick that adjoins our site. So combined, there would be about one point three million dollars that we'd spend on the site. We would like to budget two hundred fifty thousand for camp this year. Eventually, that number would be five hundred thousand or three or four years to finish the project. But we would be reimbursed back to camp two hundred fifty thousand. As we complete work, we can apply for reimbursements that comes after the district, but we need to see money to start off. Both those projects have, well, one has been secured. The second one has been applied for and we're waiting to hear from the state whether they're gonna give us a subpoena or not. So those are the three major projects we have underway for the next fiscal year, natural capital. One thing about the report, it contains a lot of information in terms of where we'd like to go in the next few years with projects, both large and small. But it will also give you some background on broad costs for doing natural capital, defining what natural capital is. How we schedule and complete work. So it's a good read if you like to know how some of the components that go into planning these types of projects. They're a bit different than, than the hard infrastructure projects that you've just heard. But they're the other part of what the district's assets are. But happy to take any questions if you have.
Thank you. I think that's very forward looking. I think that it appears that we've learned and we're developing the ability to work with other organizations. And I think partially that reflects your personality and I think that's wonderful. And I think as we, on the board, sort of worry about the property tax and so forth and so forth. It seems like there is money available, perhaps through federal, state or other private sources. And, and we have the knowledge and expertise both to tap into that money, partner with those organizations and accomplish things that are beneficial, you know, to our to the county here, to our organization. So I think that's really very, very good.
Well, thank you. Every staff member in our MMS end rolls in different organizations. So when something comes up, there's usually somebody who has a connection somewhere in those organizations and we're able to move forward.
Does anybody have anything specific for that? Well, what do you need from us this evening?
No action, just a consensus that there's concurrence and we will build that in. You'll see it again when the budget comes back and it's ended in November.
I think you have that consensus. Okay, alright, very good. Thank you. The next, I think we're gonna get into the weeds on the Prairie Trail South, Meyer Drive, Stream Road and the Trail, stabilization project. There was a lot of information about that in the packet. And I'll just begin by saying I found it a little bit confusing, and I read it a couple of times. It doesn't take much to confuse me. There are three sections of string, north, center and south. There is a base bid, and then there are four alternatives, alternates. And as I under, as I, the takeaway was, we've selected a contractor. We're okay with the base bid, and we're taking four alternates. When I think of alternate, I think of either or. So I'm not sure, and again, it's just me and lack of familiarity. How do you integrate four alternates in, into, into this project? So that was my question.
It's a great, you summed it up great. And I don't, I don't have, I don't have the images of it. But in essence, what we did is the base bid was if we only addressed the bare minimum of what was needed. And we didn't have the cooperation of the additional land from the village of Lake in the Hills. We still, we wanted to create a plan and a design and a solution, right, that that, that we could do, contain right within the district's, you know, authority and responsibility. And so that's what the base bid is, okay? However, the alternates two, three and four are for additional components. So you, you could pick base bid and you could also add, also add alternate one, which was a new box culvert. So there's old culverts, there's a big detention basin. If anybody's been down there, again, twenty-five plus years old. So that would replace, so then in, in the way that you explained it, yes, that you would add that work for the new box culvert. So that's alternate two. Alternate three then was on the east side of the trail. So we're sandwiched in between this tributary and right up against Meyer Material gravel pit. And on the east side, what would be helpful long-term would be to create a small swale. There's, it's actually pitched towards and over the trail right now. So again, you would add alternate three to the base bed. Alternate four is for the actual asphalt replacement. And I know that sounds odd, being that it was, it's a trail and that, except that it's not terrible shape. And that's not what the problem is. The problem is the water is undercutting and again, the close proximity. And so it's just, it's always flooded and we're eroding away the trail. Yeah, yes. But again, the, the larger and constant and from, from day one was on the west side. The amount of water and the, and the, the capacity and the, and the pace of it is just so rapid and flashy that it is undercutting the trail. And so we've lost sections of trail, again, and it's very narrow. So we didn't have enough space to have a good slope and reinforce that side with the amount of water that's coming through there, if that makes sense. And so we need to address, we need to address that long-term. So from, we, we have multiple fixes throughout the years, multiple managers of so there's some places that are concrete, there's some places that are large riffraff, there's some places, again, but we've always been limited by the, the narrow property boundaries, okay? So two, three and four. Alternate one is what would be typical and that you would take out, yes, that's the re-meander. And so in the base bed, there was, there was the, the, the north, the south, the north, the central, the south. Take out the central, because the central is the same section of the meander. And so then you would switch out design solution, right? The base bed, again, we didn't have the extra acreage to make it wider and to add capacity to, to the, how much, you know, where we had what area to slow the water down. And so that's what you have. So then you look at my math and say, you did your math wrong. But no, you take out that, in the base bed, take out this, the dollar amount for the central creek section and put in the alternate one. And so actually, there's a little bit of a cost savings actually doing the meander, because it's not all of the man-made structures, the bunker structures. There's still some that are necessary where you get back into the narrow confined, you know, land situation. But yes, where we can open up and meander, we actually have a little bit of a cost savings. I think it's like twenty, twenty-four thousand dollars.
We've gotten, we have agreement from the community, other communities.
Did that last month.
Well, that, that, I think you've explained my question and I, I appreciate that. Does anybody have anything else on this? Seems like it's been well worked, that you've selected a contractor that you're comfortable with and it's given a competitive price.
Well, just to, just to, so on the actionable item for the board, I consented Jen the Thursday night is to award the bid to the lowest bidder that we feel comfortable considering work. Staff recommendation is to do it all, okay, and to go full force with this. We also just have exposure is part of the ARPA funding through the county that we have also requested. They have not determined who is going to receive those dollars yet. So there's a tiny piece. But in talking with staff, we feel that whether we get the ARPA funding or not, although we hope we do, because we've tried every which way to get funding for our projects that are critical, that this be a project that we, with the funds available, we move forward. to get funding for our projects that are critical, that this be a project that we, with the funds available, we move forward with the pricing.
Well, I'm comfortable with your presentation and, and we'll have a vote on this on Thursday. So if anyone has another issue to raise, then um, we can pull it and talk about it on Thursday or and try to get your questions answered between now and then.
One question on that two charging stations. Would it be free for people to use or the credit card and buy electricity or?
Well, on that, uh, we don't know yet. We get to decide that, but it, we need to decide that upfront before you choose your system because some sys- systems don't allow you to track very easily. Um, and so, yeah, we would have that conversation, um, and make that decision early on.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, and so uh, I think we have our friends from the foundation. So uh, and we've seen a, a schedule of things that um, the foundation has discussed and improved.
So the foundation hasn't discussed these yet. Um.
Stand and talk.
Um, so our process that's in place, um, which was put in place a couple of years ago is that the district's executive team reaches out to their managers who provide projects that they won't be doing or that they see as desirable funding opportunities for private funders in the upcoming fiscal years, this fiscal year, next fiscal year, and then even further out sometimes. Um, once the executive leadership team pulls together those project lists, they come forth to you guys to review and if you see any projects on that list that as the board, you don't deem a priority as far as fundraising is concerned, um, we're looking to you to remove those. Or if all of these projects are projects that you think if you had alternate funding to complete, you would be comfortable having district staff implement the work, they then move forward to our board to kind of choose what we might fund out of our coffers, out of our bank accounts. But the list also exists to guide conversations with private funders as well. So if I sat down and had a conversation with Bill and it turned out Bill really loved Four Woods, even if the foundation had not committed to funding their project, I would know that that is something the district has approved as an opportunity and I can present that to a donor as such. And so at tonight's meeting, we're just looking at a consensus from you that the list presented is ring lit to move forward to the foundation board, or if it's not, what items would you like taken off of it?
I mean, and comments when I.
I have a question. So like, uh, you know, the first one, it says it's a project, but it's a vehicle.
Yes, yeah.
So is that vehicle an asset that the foundation has or is that?
It would be an asset that would be fundraised for by the foundation, but would ultimately be owned and um, maintained by the district.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the van outreach van, is that just something with a wrap on it? Is that what that is?
Yeah, it would be a van, uh, marketing and education and Wendy, if you want to try and go free, but um, the education programming team is looking for a vehicle that allows them to bring conservation into the community. So this vehicle would be outfitted inside to be applicable to the work that they're looking to do in community outreach. And then would also be wrapped on the outside so people were aware that it was a district van and also the foundation had made a cost.
This, I didn't expect to see like equipment on here. Can we explain how, I thought it'd be more project related than equipment.
So it.
That the conservation district would purchase the equipment, that's something that you'd be planning asset replacements.
And typically it is. Um, we ask all of the teams to bring forth their kind of dream project. Some of our teams cite specifically their needs are more material. Um, and that specific piece of equipment, I believe, is something that isn't on the docket to the district to purchase themselves. Am I correct, Karen? Yeah.
Yes, you do.
And some of that, I think, is, there's a couple of things that we got into. Uh, one is the bandwidth capacity that the district has to implement projects and and being backlogged and the need that there are some enhancements and things that we do need that we don't have a fund in our operating class to be able to take care of. And so I think that's why we're looking at the foundation as a way to help us set, you're right, on vehicles and equipment and some of those things are, would generally be something that is just gonna have to, even if it's funded by the foundation to start off with, it will be wrapped into our regular placing schedule.
Without, with the outreach, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
With the outreach van, is it, we're looking at considering electric vehicle, plug-in hybrid?
When, you know, the price that was presented, at this point, the information that you have in front of you is the information that I have. Once our board discusses what project they specifically may want to fund or once a funding opportunity that presents itself, I request more information from staff just so that this pro- this process is not ultra cumbersome at the very beginning when we don't have funding lined up out of the game.
Thanks.
So.
And are some of these things potentially, um, could they be sold? That's the long term, to be co-funded with a private agency who would get some recognition in the sense of um, public relations or advertising.
Yeah.
That they were working co-sponsoring with the foundation for the benefit of the district.
Absolutely. Um, especially here recently, any organization that has funded a foundation project has had a press release and has had their name in the press release. We've always published things and landscapes on our website. Wendy's team helps with that effort. Um, and certain things get signage, the outreach vehicle, if somebody were to pay for that in full, they're maybe, maybe put on it. Yeah.
Right. All right, well, any, um, I mean, I think it all makes sense. Um, and um, I didn't see anything here that seems illogical or inappropriate.
Yeah, I would just say I feel like the equipment should be budgeted and the, the district probably that to the foundation, but it's just.
And um, I don't if the district had the dollars, um, you know, these things might have been accomplished in that route, but we seem to have been scrambling for dollars and so if the foundation can and um, is a resource, then I don't it's, it's okay with me, in other words.
That's a staff wish list.
Yeah, this whole list we're not committing to.
Yeah.
This is like, I mean, we just went through the covering ages of projects that you know, that, you know, there's so many other projects that can balance out the equipment related as opposed to project.
I think a portion of that is also just to give potential, uh, you know, donors or, um, you know, uh, a range of items to, that they feel would fall within their wheelhouse that they would want to. So some people might want to donate money to the foundation for something that would be used.
Yeah.
Put their name. On a, on a, on a day-to-day basis or something like that, might, might be more more willing to donate if there was machinery or something like that, but I see your shift.
Hmm, but if you think that, you know, a dealership to help you with that um, van or with a vehicle or a tractor or something, that, you know, it's uh, I think in there's always an angle to sort of, you know, try to sell it. Uh, and so I don't, again, it's another selling point, I suppose. Yeah.
It's a, it's a good point. I think in what we always try with the foundation, of course, I'll leave tomorrow night, the third meeting, is having things that have a touch to the community that have impact. And so it's, I think we find ourselves many a time very easy to attract to some natural resource on the ground, loose on the ground projects versus something that's gonna take a long time or is lost in a larger project. I mean, that's why the grants are helpful for the foundation to, to get a, a win. Um, it's how it's all managed. But I, I appreciate all the respect this year. We're trying every which way we can to maximize our dollars.
Great, thanks.
Stakeout here for the next four point two. Not.
Well, then, uh, uh, I think we're moving to six point five, the Lost Valley Visitor Center and the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Tourism Foundation.
Yeah, um, so this is the second round of funding from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Department, um, where the state of Illinois has gotten ARPA funds, which Elizabeth had kind of what we did too earlier, to fund tourism um, and revitalize what COVID kind of brought to a grinding halt. Um, this grant opportunity, for those of you who were on the board last year, you may recall that um, myself and the planning and development team had brought for um, applying for this funding to align with EDA funding for the prairie trade. Um, we were not successful in getting the EDA funding and this funding opportunity, the first round of it ran out before we were able to apply. So second round of it, um, since the prairie trail, that larger revitalization project is off the table without EDA funding, we pivoted and Amy and her team felt like those projects at Lost Valley Visitor Center might be most applicable because it is our most visited visitor center, our most visited site in the county. Um, and so what we're looking to fund is the exterior paint at Lost Valley Visitor Center, the electric vehicle charging station that was mentioned. And then as a way to kind of hopefully boost the grant because paint is not a sexy opportunity that funders really want to pay for. Um, we threw in the idea of kind of revamping the patio and adding some furniture that people who visit can utilize, people who attend programming can utilize. Um, and so that is the request that you are looking at in front of you. We'd be looking to kind of um, reduce the costs of the projects that are already on the project list while also getting a little bit of additional work.
No, I see a lot of, it's not, so it's, I don't know. I think we're gonna give you the green light, go for it.
Um, one other thing that came up and I'm gonna throw this in, Amy mentioned signage for district sites and I would kind of also like to touch base with you perhaps on combining that into this opportunity if that works out. Because I think district-wide signage would really be appealing if you felt like it worked. But if you didn't think it worked, not to like put you on the side.
Let's talk. I think it all comes down to capacity, right? Not what would be a ready grant, right? Instead, just timing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I figure on that issue, some type of policy. I, I remember we, there was a very short discussion at some point about land that the district owns that is not utilized and do we want some type of signage that says, you know, conservation district? And there was some pushback from, uh, I think the ag community that might not want signs up on land that was being leased, you know, because it didn't necessarily make uh, have the sense that the public would say, well, I'm gonna go for a hike here or, you know, take my dog or do, do whatever else. So I think before you get too far ahead on signage, we should have a policy sort of statement as to as to where signage is appropriate.
Well, and maybe if I can jump in just to clarify, we're talking about either, you know, redoing existing um, entrance signs because those were temporary. We're also uh, talking about, you know, interior, all of our facilities, the visitor centers. We don't have weight finding signage, our trails, Gleason Park and Hollows have been on the list to do, you know, just internal trail signage. So yeah, I hear you with that for sure. I just to clarify, our, our, our focus is not that. It, it's very, um, you know, site specific.
Makes sense. Any uh, any other comments? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
That's great. We're coming up to the two-hour mark, which is uh, opposing my limits. So uh, we'll keep moving along and uh, we'll try to uh, take a break before we go into our executive session. But let's uh, just try to be efficient. That's the important things, in other words.
Make it quick, all right? Well, I would do so. I tend to talk fast anyhow, but uh, but these are important. I, I wanted to highlight these to you um, on two public acts and while we have, it's wonderful to have a turntable this year, this evening in person. Thought it was also helpful to kind of go over and see if, and if he can help us and that is more knowledgeable than I am on this legislation, but there are two I want to talk about that are recent legislative pieces that we will need to uh, comply with and uh, Andrew, do you want to take the first one?
Sure, um, and you sent the memo that I figured around. So you guys, I, I won't belabor it and I know we've been here, but this is um, another lovely unfunded mandate from Springfield. Uh, I think most likely in response, if you've been following along, um, there's been a variety of bills introduced over the past several years aimed at considerations of potentially eliminating uh, units of government. Illinois, I think, has uh, the dubious honor of having the most units of government uh, in the United States. Uh, but I, I think what they're really doing is, is trying to figure out if some of the smaller taxing bodies, uh, it might not be more efficient to absorb them into some of the larger taxing bodies. Uh, if you look at the act, counties and municipalities are specifically excluded from the act's coverage. So that really leaves kind of the rest of the, the local government entities that have tax and power throughout the state. Uh, and what this act does is it, it forces you to set up uh, once every ten years, a committee to sort of evaluate um, your own agency uh, with um, the board, executive director, anyone else in staff you think is important, and then at least two members of the community stakeholders to sort of review what the district does, look at your statutes, look at your rules, uh, look at the other uh, units of government in town that you partner with and create a report um, of the things you do well, uh, the things you could improve on areas. Um, to create efficiencies, um, I think for a unit of government like the conservation district, um, I don't think that's one of the ones that's on the, the realistic list for being absorbed somewhere else. Um, but I think it's an exercise, of course, you to examine how you do business and in particular, how you relate with your other taxing bodies in town to see what other um, efficiencies you could create or take advantage of. I think you guys already do a pretty fantastic job of doing that. Uh, so really, it's probably documenting it um, for posterity's sake, so, so people can look back and um, see what you've accomplished. Uh, but again, this is something they're going to force you to do uh, once every ten years. Um, so you have a year from the act's creation, uh, so next June tenth, twenty twenty-three to form the committee. Uh, and then from that point, you have eighteen months to carry out the committee business and then submit a written report to the county. Um, beyond that, there's probably just as many um, questions as there are answers. Like a lot of things this just came down, um, I'm, I'm sure there's, there's going to be lots of questions that we, we don't have good answers to. Um, obviously, boards turn over, um, staff positions could turn over. Um, so there could be changes on the composition of the board while you're in the process of uh, going through your meetings, um, compiling your information, writing the report. Um, I think like a lot of these things, reasonable best efforts, it's all you can do. Um, again, I don't know if there needs to be um, with municipal or with um, uh, the consolidated consolidated election coming up next year. I don't know that there needs to be a rush to, to form this committee. Um, certainly you could do it, um, you know, next spring, moving into the summer and then allow yourself the eighteen months to work through it to try to give yourself as much, much consistency on the, on the committee as possible, but obviously um, you can't control all the variables. But obviously, you can't control all the variables, so things will change. But beyond that, I think the best thing you can do is just approach it with a reasonableness approach and look at it and say, okay, what was the intended purpose of this? And how best can we comply with that? Again, this is not something that has any penalty provisions for lack of compliance. So again, I think as long as you're making a good faith effort to comply, you're going to be just fine. And like many of these things, I may tell, there might be amendments, there might be FAQ's released, there might be follow-up legislation, who knows? But for right now, that's, that's kind of what we know. I'm happy to answer or try to answer any specific questions if you have them, if you have more to add.
The only thing I will say is the district has been very involved. I sat on the basically a writ of counting and the local units of government as we were going to consolidate the conversation. So we've already mapped a lot of the type of efficiencies and really had a study that was done by CNET that helped us with that, staff participating in some of those focus groups. And I think it'll be interesting from the county, the legislation to my knowledge doesn't identify that they direct as the units of government what they're supposed to receive, since the county's going to be receiving all these reports. They may have a, a, a conversation with Chairman Hula and Peter Austin. I think it will be in order to just to kind of monitor. But Shaylan Dango, who has been hired, you know, helps kind of work with municipalities and how we're looking to share services. So I think, I think the point is we have to establish this timeframe, do the work. But I think the district is positioned well and in our, it's all about political climate, but I don't know where in good shape.
And you make a good point. It's, it's unclear at this point what's going to happen with all of these reports. They're submitted to the various counties, but I think, I guess time will tell, but all we can do is what we're, we're told to do by the staff.
Who's exempt exactly?
Counties and municipalities.
How in this, that, that's, obviously, everyone under them that receives tax dollars.
Not that receives tax dollars, but has the ability to levy tax. Maybe that road districts, townships, mosquito abatement and WRD. Yeah, so I, pretty much anything that could show up on your tax bill.
Right.
Would be subject to this.
Yeah, okay, all right.
You said that there need two stakeholders on the committee. And I'm assuming that like can't be staff since there's already staff that would be present as part of the committee. So how do we go about possibly getting a point or whoever that goes to stakeholder? Yeah, there would, there would be, there's no prohibition against if a, a, a staff member of the district also resides within corporate boundaries, there'd be no prohibition against that person participating. But again, yeah, I, I think it would just be advertising, whether it's word of mouth advertisement on websites and things like that. But just finding members of the community might be interested in participating on it. But again, there's no, there's no guidance on the selection process, so that would be at the, at the board's discretion to figure out. If you've got lots of people interested, whether there's vetting process, interviews, things like that, that you might do as you would, you know, considering vacancies and things like that. I guess you just have to see how many people are interested in participating.
I think it was key to have somebody that was just general, from my understanding, that was general public, right? Somehow that had that ability to kind of.
And they're, they're really keying in because not only do they want you to have two members of the, of the general public, but they also want you to, A, specifically allow public comment during the meeting, but then also poll or survey the community after each meeting to, to really say, okay, here's what we talked about. Do you have any specific input? So they're, they're really concerned about gathering as much public input as possible on the process.
I'm smiling because I think we should nominate the past board members.
Careful what you ask for.
Well, we'll see what you say. I, I mean, I. It will only be as good as what goes in. To me, it's, it's going to be a time-consuming chore. But we do what we're supposed to do, so that's, I mean, that's the answer.
So that was the first one. The other one that we've got a great start on, and our accounting and finance team has hit this. And so Public Act 1020265 was minority-owned, women-owned, veteran-owned business. And basically, this one, Mar and Jay is, and the county's been working on this as well. So we've been modeling the program, we're ready to go with the letter. And then to do an inventory and promote of the vendors who we do business with, how do we follow these types of categories? And so we'll collect all that data, we'll put it up on the pin, pin, and portal. It's required of anyone that has any budget that they're allowing by $500 or more. So when you're good, we'll get this stuff out, actually, we're ready to go forward and we'll have it all completely, practically, surrounded by people. Just so the board knows, that is another unfunded mandate. It's a requirement to have legislation. We're already moving on to it, thanks to Andy and his leadership team again. And then just a couple briefly under executive direction report. You get a copy of the Icaria I P D magazine. So again, I heard you, I mentioned this last month, that our marketing team did a nice article about Bison. But also, if you pay particular attention, their Jason Anslman from I P D does a great, a kind of a board. Peter Murphy does too on certain things about, that I would encourage the board, if there's something you need, that would be an area to read. And there's a lot about Open Meetings Act or other things that the board should be aware of, and so that's available to you. There is also, if any board members would like to attend the I P D Legal Symposium, it's an event that I usually attend annually and do attend annually, and then some staff members. But board members are welcome to attend as well. There is a fee. We'll be speaking on one of the sessions on techniques and procedures for regulating vandalism, drugs, violence, and other illicit activity in parks and facilities. But we talked about borrowing, you know, bonds, other types of new legislation that's going on. It's a very interesting employment law, things that kind of give us our, all the things that we need to be concerned about and, and given order with. And that is November 3rd. So I will put that out, ring a mail to the board if you're interested. And then, as I said, the foundation meets tomorrow night, but also same time, Path Attack National Wildlife Refuge is holding their annual meeting. And so that information, I believe, was sent out ahead of time, but is our registration for appointments. So again, there's one annual event, let's see, another new one for our partners.
So Elizabeth, if we're gonna take a break, do I need a motion to go into executive session? Should we take our break first? What's the right way to do it?
Okay, so we should, we should ask for public comments one last time. And then we'll make a motion to go into executive session, and you'll develop that, and then we will take a break. And there is no action plan tonight after.
All right, so any public comments? Anyone out in the internet that wishes to make a comment?
There is no one.
Thank you. I have a motion to go into. Thank you. Linda, in the second.
Oh, I have three that we consideration of a motion to go into an executive session pursuant to C1 personnel, to C5 lease, purchase of real estate, and to C2121, review of closed session minutes of the Open Meetings Act, five ILCS 120 slash one, whatever ET. Thank you, good. Thank you, Ray. All right.
In a second, Ray's second and a roll call please.
Judge Prince?
Yes.
Vice President Dom?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yeah.
Trusty Gaten?
Yes.
Trusty Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trusty Everard?
Yes.
President Cook?
Thanks, yes. Okay, so let's take a five or 10-minute break and then come back and. Okay, so thank you all, and motion to adjourn.
Second.